I now call the work session of the Abogald School Board to order. Public forum. We will first hear from Mr. Bogshark of Fayette County.
I'm going to take this off the speaker because I'm not muffled too much. I appreciate the time you're giving me here tonight to talk about a business attraction program called Keystone Opportunity Zones. Hopefully, you're familiar with the program, but if you're not, it's basically a tool to attract business by getting that business to tax abatement in order for them to come to an area that otherwise they might not come to. And the reason that I'm here tonight is that there are some K O Z properties that are in the Business Park here in Georgia's Township that are expiring as far as their K O Z designation goes. And we're hoping that we can get them extended for another 10 years. So if you look in your packet, you can see all the K O Z properties that are in Fayette County on that map. And you can see that in the Fayette Business Park, there's about 85 acres that are currently designated as Keystone Opportunity Zones. If you look at the next slide, you can see a bigger depiction of those different properties that are listed as K O Zs that will be expiring at the end of 2020. And then the next page is an overview that shows those same vacant properties in the park. And you can also see the developed parcels in the park. If you haven't been through the park, there are companies such as Boeing, Johnson &amp; Matthew, Jerome Manufacturing, Mike Murray Medical is in the bus in the front, Berkeley Medical is in a building in the back. So I'm hoping some of those names are familiar to you and you can see how they're listed there on that particular map. The benefits of having K O Zs in a particular location are on the next slide. And I'm not going to read all of those, but these programs exist all throughout Pennsylvania. And the idea is to provide incentives for businesses to locate in Pennsylvania, as I mentioned, because of the tax abatement that those companies enjoy for a period of time. So basically, if you have a Keystone Opportunity Zone property that is vacant and it has a certain designation to last for a particular amount of time, and a business comes into that vacant property and builds upon it, they get those tax abatement benefits up through the time until that K O Z expires. And then since it's been occupied, that particular parcel property is no longer eligible to be extended as a Keystone Opportunity Zone. So what benefit does that have to the community that has a K O Z in? Some of the highlights here is that if you look at the Business Park, there's something like 2,000 jobs that have been created and exist currently in that Business Park. So job attraction and creation, businesses have invested millions upon millions of dollars building the facilities that are in the park. And you can read through some of those for yourself. The one thing I wanted to point out on this slide, this is the one with the bullet points listed on it if you're not on that page, is at the very bottom, and you can see how the progression has occurred from 2000, when there were originally 2,564 acres designated as Keystone Opportunity Zones in that Business Park. By 2010, only 1,284 acres were left. That means the difference between those two were acres that businesses actually built upon and came into the park to take advantage of the Keystone Opportunity Zone. You can see it slowed down a little bit there between 2010 and 2020. There's, it looks like only about 100 acres were developed in that time period. But the remaining acreage that's there is what's proposed for extension. And that's, I'm sorry, this is throughout the entire county, not just for the Fayette Business Park. So there's a list of businesses on the next slide that have benefited in Fayette County from taking advantage of Keystone Opportunity Zones to locate here. And you can see the expiration dates. And what that means is when Duke Energy came into the K O Z that they were in in 2000, or in that 2000-2010 period, once that 2000-2010 period would expire, when they built on that property, Duke Energy started paying taxes. So in 2013, all of those companies listed there started paying taxes when their K O Zs expired. And in 2020, you can see the list of companies that will begin paying taxes in 2021 when their particular K O Z designation is expired. And again, whenever you build on a site, that's what starts the clock ticking for the expiration date. If you look on the next slide, there's a list of the taxes that are abated for the companies that are locating in a K O Z. And of course, the local ones are going to be the most important ones to you. So essentially, when a business comes into the Keystone Opportunity Zone, builds a facility, brings all those jobs and investments here, this is the tax work that they get for a period of time until their particular K O Z expires. And then finally, on this last page, this is a detailed listing of the properties that we're asking for you to consider for extension for another 10 years. And there's the breakdown there of those 85 acres. For the most part, Fayette County is the majority owner of that acreage, but you can see some of the other individuals and companies, such as Robert Charosco and Johnson &amp; Matthew, Art Coast Realty, et cetera, are also owners of parcels in the park that are looking for the extensions from 2020, I'm sorry, from 2020 to 2030 as well. The one thing I wanted to point out specifically for that Business Park and in Georgia's Township are those three last flying items there. So you can see where it says Calfrac, the B O S site, and Art Coast. All of those facilities and businesses were put in in the last decade, and they're going to be expiring at the end of 2020. So in 2021, if you look at that bottom line there, you can see the taxes that are now going to be starting to be paid by those businesses at the municipal school and county level. So at the school district level, it looks like there's another 109,000, if my notes are accurate here, and change that is now going to be coming into the tax rolls from those businesses that built in the K O Z. The K O Z is now expiring, and now they're going to start paying those taxes that we just looked at on the other page. So you can see the attraction potential of having that tax abatement to get a company to locate here and give them that tax break in the initial period of time where their K O Z is active. And then when it expires, that's what brings the additional tax revenue in. In the meantime, all those jobs that were created when the business first located here, those folks are paying income taxes, and they probably have houses where they're paying property taxes. And the employees themselves are supporting the tax rolls until the company starts doing it when their K O Z expires and they start having to pay taxes. So that's the brief summary. Happy to answer any questions, but basically, what we're looking for is a resolution to be approved by the School Board here this evening that indicates that you are willing to extend the K O Z for those 85 acres so that we can continue to use that tool as a business attractant to bring in more businesses into the Fayette Business Park. In addition to the School Board here, Georgia's Township would have to approve the same 85 acres. And then Fayette County as well, the Commissioners would also have to approve it. So all three entities have to approve it in order for this to be allowable for an extension and for us to submit it to the state.
Have any other entities approved?
For this particular parcel, Mike, yeah. We are getting on the schedule, the whole State Township was the first meeting that occurred. And I'm going through all the subsequent meetings. And I couldn't tell you our hand when Georgia's Township meets and when the Commissioners meet. But yeah, we'll have to talk to you. You would be the first entity for this particular geographic area that would approve. Don't anticipate any issues with the others, quite frankly, but you're the person.
Those are vacant lots, but no structures on it right yet.
Correct.
As you mentioned, Johnson &amp; Matthew, they have a lot of ability on it, adds an additional.
There's additional acreage there that they actually looked at expanding there a couple of years ago. And for whatever reason, that didn't happen. So they do have some vacant acreage there that if they were to expand upon it, they would be able to take advantage of the K O Z for that amount of time. Yeah, just one point. We are planning, let's see which parcel number is here. If you look on the map, it's like the fourth slide in where all the businesses and the overview is, Google Maps or whatever it is, you'll notice at the far left, there is a big piece of acreage that we're actually going to be putting up what's known as a speculative building. That means we don't have a tenant for it yet, or a business wants to kind of occupy it. It would be 100,000 square foot, high ceiling facility for advanced manufacturing. What we've found is that it's no longer sufficient just to have billable acreage. A lot of companies want to have pre-existing buildings ready to move into so that they can get off the ground faster and get their product to market faster. So based on some of the market analysis that we've done, we will be breaking ground for that facility next month, quite frankly, for 100,000 square foot facility on one of these parcels. So at some point, whoever moves into that facility, one of the big attractants for them will be that that parcel will be a K O Z if you decide to move forward with it. Just another point of information.
So the three properties that you indicated will be back on the tax rolls in 2021. Have they been exempt for the last 10 years?
Yes.
So does that mean that we've given up a million dollars worth of taxable tax base by getting that exemption for the last 10 years? I mean, are your numbers next year that they're going to go over $100,000 in school taxes? Isn't that what that means?
It depends on when they actually, I don't know when they initiated in the zone. So I couldn't tell you where Calfrac located there, for example. So you have to throw rate that number, quite frankly. But the rationale is if you didn't have the K O Z tax abatement, they might have located somewhere else. And you still have vacant properties there and none of the jobs created by those companies. So Calfrac, they're with the shale industry, so is B O S, so is Art Coast, quite frankly. They're all shale gas companies.
And you don't have any information on whether the employees from those companies are all within the Abogald School District? I mean, surely they're not, surely we got L H Union Town and correct?
I do not, yeah. I don't have an idea where all their employees are located, no.
If, question, if Johnson &amp; Matthew or any other company, five years from now would build, would the clock start at that time, once they've completed their building? Or would they automatically get 10 years from that time?
It would go up to 2030. So what we're doing is a 10-year extension request. That's how the state does it. So every 10 years, whatever K O Z properties are left in the state's rolls, they're not adding any new stuff, at least right now. So if they started building in 2025, they would get five years of that tax abatement up through 2030. So it's not like they get the full 10 years, it would expire at 2030.
And my question is, say if Calfrac pulls out, where this is exempt, are there any penalties on Calfrac?
They still have the property taxes, so if they shut down business, you mean?
Yeah.
They still would pay property tax on that building when it expired. Now, some of the other ones that are based on their revenues, you know, obviously, if they're not here, they're not going to be generating revenue. They're still here.
I feel like so many Volkswagen cars.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and you know, there's nothing to say that, there's nothing to compare there, exactly.
They had restitution maybe, well.
Correct, yep, there is that, there's always that risk. And then Sony plant Volkswagen cars is a very example of that.
What agency do you represent?
I'm with Fayette County Economic Development Council. So we're the ones that built the park and then have sold parcels over time to the businesses that have located there.
Okay, so forgive my ignorance, but is that a private organization or is that a quasi municipal organization?
No, we're private, we're funded primarily by buildings that we own and we use space out of. So for example, in this park, there's a company called G H X. If you look on the map page here that has all of the companies, the overview page, if you look at the top right, you see G H X and Columbia Gas. Both of those buildings are owned by Fayette and we lease that to those companies. So from revenue that we get from leasing companies in our buildings, we have loan programs where we loan money to small businesses and we pay us interest. We're essentially self-sustaining. We can get some grants from federal and state governments, but we're essentially a private organization. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Everything we make goes right back into, you know, doing more parks and things like that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you for your time and attention. Do I?
There could be a vote tonight. This is a work session, voting being tomorrow night. If I have decided, you know, place it on tomorrow, it's generally not.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we'd like to hear from Mike McKay from RBC Capital.
Thank you, Madam President, remember the words, let's say it again. Mr. Belsek asked me to come and review the results of the bond issue. If you're authorized, if you're not, back on March 18th of this year, my own time applies. I put a package in front of you, paper folder, three documents. The top one looks like this. And I'll do this fairly quickly because we have a lot of time. The final results are in. As you remember, we were refinancing 2010 B bonds. And we had deliberated for a couple of months. The package one, borrow seven million dollars in additional funds for capital projects. So on June 4th, the bonds were sold. And I'm here to deliver the good news at interest rates. After a lot of turmoil in the marketplace with COVID-19, interest rates did cooperate pretty nicely. We can walk through the schedules here. Let's start with the top one, the blue color. Do you stop me with any questions? So the first page is your debt profile. You now have four series of bonds outstanding, 2018 Bs and 2018 Cs, as well as the new 20A and 20B bonds. And your debt service on far right, column six, on a gross basis, you can see going out to fiscal year '29, which is really actually September 1st, 2023. The net debt service in the middle block of numbers is after state reimbursement. And as you know, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania reverses you for certain of the series of bonds that you have outstanding. And so your net debt service in column 12 is pretty close to $3 million going all the way out through fiscal year '29. So it's a pretty level debt service. And it's also very short, which is also a very good thing. And this is after, this is after the resolve of the sale of the bonds that occurred earlier this month. And then you can see all the particulars of the bonds that have outstanding. So if you want to keep this for reference or good reference. So the next two pages are the Series A and B, these are the two new bonds. Also look at those. But really, the meat and potatoes of what we did on the refinancing is the last page of this summary. And you can see that the refinancing ended up achieving a savings of $514,569. Savings of 5.717%. They are then on the call, but your resolution authorizes a move forward. And the savings was at least 2% of the principal during refinance. And that equates to $180,000. So we were significantly above the savings that you set, savings target that you set. So both Vince and I are very, very pleased with the outcome of the sale. What I wanted to show you on this also is the savings is going to be divided into two fiscal years. And I know Vince went over this, but I wanted to make sure you heard it from me as well and will also answer, or have me answer any questions for you. The savings is going to be divided equally between fiscal year end of '21 and '22. So that's column number eight. And then you go back to the same thing that you had before. You can plus or minus a couple thousand dollars because bonds are issued in $5,000 denominations. And then column nine is net of state reimbursement. So if you save money, the state saves a little bit of money. They get about $50,000, you get the balance, which is $200,000. So all in all, the numbers and the savings, we probably, you know, we finally got the market as high as any of this, any of the analysis we had gone from the beginning of the year from the first start of this process. Interest rates, you know, all the cost of issuance, we're really, all the planets aligned. And to save a half a million dollars on refinancing $9 million is a tremendous effort. And I always say I'd love to take the full credit, but you folks are a lot smarter than that. We're just, we're just happy with the timing and getting happy with that half a million dollars that goes in. The next document that I placed in front of you was the rating report. It's got a red cover like this. And as we talked about when I was here last on March 18th, through the process of issuing bonds, we had to update the rating of the Abogald Area School District. And this is an opportunity for an outside firm, the Standard New Force, to take a look at the financial wherewithal of the district. And they did a significant look. This is, this was done as of March 27th. So this was just at the beginning of the COVID. It had had some impact on the rating, but there were a lot of factors that were in there. And please do take a look at this because a lot of, a lot of effort goes into this. There's a lot of good information for really anybody to read. It is posted publicly on the website called msrb ebba.com. But also, I wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it. Unfortunately, the district, it was not downgraded, but the outlook is downgraded. So the school district has had an A-minus rating since 2018 from the last time, but you went on to a negative outlook from a stable outlook. And there's a couple reasons why I can point those out to you in the report. Basically, in the first couple of pages in the summary, and that goes into a lot further detail. But the really, on page two, in the credit overview, it talks about the, about your fund balance and there's the possibility of getting a fund balance, dropping your fund balance to a point where it's cautionary to the ratings. You can see, and once it falls below a certain level, the A, C, and A-minus, school district. And this is all based on your peers, other school districts with similar ratings. If it falls below a level, they're concerned that you go down to the next lower rating. And that's why it was a negative outlook as compared to a stable outlook. And then on page three, it talks, and there's a little summary. Some of the things are out of your control. For example, the average incomes and unemployment, other things like that. That's just where we are here in southwestern Pennsylvania. But it does talk about a structural imbalance in the budget, which is problematic from a rating perspective. And then the high pension costs, which every school district in Pennsylvania has that issue. And then it goes on to talk about similar positives, per capita, debt per capita, meaning your debt is not very high and it's paid off rapidly, as we talked about in the prior handout. And management practices and financial management assessment of the situation is adequate, which is also positive. So take some time to read this, there's some good information. And it's, like I said, a third, a third party taking independent logic from Abogald School District. Very detailed. Finally, the last handout is a, one page looks like this. And this is a comparison of the other similar bond issues that were done in the marketplace at the same time your bond issue is done. I know that I was asked several times that I've been here, how do you know that you've got to put interest rates on your bond issue and pay an appropriate fee? And just generally, that you've got a fair decent transaction? Well, my response was, I will show, I will do that, and I will show you the other transactions in the marketplace. And it turns out that there were, there were two bond issues that were truly apple and apple comparisons. It's not very often you get real one, or this time we actually got two. It was a, it was a pretty busy time in the marketplace. Two of them just happened to be pretty close to where we're standing today. So you can see, in the Keysport Area School District and in the Union Town Area School District, a bond issue within a couple of days of each other. I'm sorry, within a couple of days of Abogald Area School Issue. And if you look at the gray column and you follow that across, you know, we'll just pick a maturity. So each year, there was a maturity, you can compare that to the interest rates. And the spread is the difference between, I'm located in the whole thing, but it's the, it's what bond issues are compared to, which is the base, which is MMD. So the lower the spread, the lower your interest rate. And then you can also look at the yield column, too. So for example, if you look at 2024, your yield of the bonds that were sold at that maturity was 1.2%. And Keysport paid 1.3, their cost of yield was 1.33%. And Union Town was 1.45%. You'll notice that in every way, this bond issue, these three bond issues were the same. The margin was exactly the same. They were within a couple of days of each other, but the margin didn't change. They were all non-bank qualified, tax exempt, insured by the same bond insurer, and had an A-minus rating, except the other two were stable, yours was negative. The other difference is your underwriters discount, in other words, the amount of P that you paid me to work on this transaction was lower than the other two. You can see that I, you paid $88.50 per thousand. And Keysport paid their investment banker 8.75. And Union Town paid there its 9. So I've given Vince a copy of every bond issue that was done the week before and the week after, just to show that I'm not cherry picking three issues to show you. These are all ones that were done that were apples and apples compares. There were, there were probably 15 bond issues done in that period of time. And some of them were double A, and some of them were bank qualified versus non-bank. They just, they weren't ones that you could compare. These are the three during this period of time that you can compare. So you can rest comfortably, anybody run, run in, anybody? Just, just know, I was going to say, if you run into somebody in the grocery store, ask them to put that appropriate one. That you receive better interest rates than anybody in the market for a similar bond issue of those similar bond issues, Keysport Area School District, Union Town Area School District. So the bond issues, the bond issue is locked and sold. It will be, the fact dates, I don't know, right? Bond issue is going to close on July 8th. And at that point, your $7 million, it's, it's wired to the district. And Vince will make sure it's best properly, and you can start doing projects that you have all anticipated. So some of this is probably a little more review, but again, I always feel funny with this situation. I wanted to come back and make sure everybody understood what was going on. I understood how the savings were structured, understood that the rates were really good. It's just a really, it's a good story, I wanted to understand what happened with the rating and also that I could do a good job selling the bonds.
Good question. What level of fund balance should we maintain so we can stay at the A-minus rating? So we don't limit our future success in the long run?
Well, that's a good question, and it's, it's a moving target. When I begin to read this report, I see that it's a trend that's following. And I can sense an inspiration for Vince that he can share, share with his board. But, and there's, I'm sorry, I don't have the number exact, it's a percentage. And what they usually say is that, you know, A-plus is typically as this percentage of their total revenues as a fund balance. And A will have this percentage, A-minus will have this. And what they're concerned is that you're starting, last couple of years, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, you're starting to see this. And I've been working here for a while, and I've, I've seen you guys go like this, and then you come back up. And it was enough to get their attention. And that's, that's what's, that's what's in the report. But I hope, I'll send Vince some of that, some report on board state line and show it. Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you, so good to see everybody, just be safe.
At this time, we'll start with the interviews for the candidates that are in the vacancy. I have explained the process to the candidates. And we have done a random order of who will go. They're aware of who will be coming first, second, so on, we have a total of 13 candidates. These are the questions, you can write some notes on the board.